Welcome to the June seventeenth Blue Springs City Council Meeting. If you'll stand with me, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll get the meeting started. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You can be seated. Call the media order and we'll have a confirmation of a quorum.
Councilmember Kayler.
Present.
Fowler.
Present.
Erickson.
Present.
Edmondson.
Here.
Cole Pepper.
Present.
Mayor Levisay.
Here.
We have a quorum.
First item on the agenda is the appointment of a District Two Councilmember. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Well, with that, we just approved Katie Tholen to be the next District Two City Councilmember. We're gonna do the oath of office. City Clerk will administer that now.
I, Katie Tholen, do solemnly slayer and affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of Councilmember for District Two. I support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Missouri for provisions of the city of Blue Springs, Home Rule Charter, and state statutes, and the ordinance of the city of Blue Springs. I shall faithfully conduct myself in office and respect the confidences and information which come into my possession.
All right, well, wait a minute while Councilmember Tholen takes her seat. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Tholen.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next item is we have a presentation, proclamation for the Blue Springs Wildcat Varsity Baseball Team. If you saw a little purple and gold here in the audience tonight, we're pretty excited to recognize them. So I'm gonna read this here and then we'll have a, we'll come down here and we'll do a little, uh, so take a couple of pictures, but. Whereas on the Blue Springs Wildcat Varsity Baseball Team will be honored for, as state championship, as state champions tonight, on June seventeenth, at the Blue Springs City Council Meeting. And whereas the Blue Springs Wildcat Varsity Baseball Team defeated Francis Howe, seventy-two, in the state semifinal, despite the adversity of rain delays. And the Blue Springs Wildcats then went on to defeat Lafayette, eleven to ten, to become the Missouri State High School Activities Association Class Six Baseball State Champions. That's a mouthful. You guys did awesome. And therefore, the, the Blue Springs Wildcat Varsity Baseball Team is led by head coach Tim. Mr. Tim, I didn't ask your last name. Can you pronounce that for me? Nick Elliott, along with a team of talented assistant coaches. Now therefore, Chris Levisay, Mayor of City of Blue Springs, and the Blue Springs City Council do hereby proclaim today, June seventeenth, as Blue Springs Wildcat Baseball Team Day. Congratulations to all of you. Give them a quick minute to exit as well. Does it feel cooler in here, at least a little bit?
No.
Not yet, not yet, no. Councilmember Kayler says no. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for life unlimited conditional use permit. Do I need to swear him in first or...? Okay. So, uh, we have several public hearings on the agenda tonight. Uh, we're gonna try to swear in each of you in bulk. Uh, you still, if you come up to speak, you'll have to give your name and address for the record as well, but we're gonna do this all at once. So if anybody that's going to speak on the life unlimited conditional use permit public hearing, if you can stand, and we'll swear you in, there may not be anybody but staff for this one. Okay, absolutely. I do. Go ahead.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated June eleventh, twenty twenty-four with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication and the examiner on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of sight, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, twenty fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, and bill approving the conditional use permit. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Staff, go ahead with your report.
Good evening. Dave McCumber, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city. Before you this evening is a request for a conditional use permit to operate an adult daycare, Life Unlimited, at the address of thirty-five-hundred Northwest South Outer Road. The property was formerly occupied by U M B Bank and has since, uh, and has been vacant since February of twenty twenty-two. Improvements on the property include a new client drop-off and pickup area and out, and, and door under the canopy of the former teller drive-up window, and a four-foot wrought iron style flat-top fence for an outdoor recreation area. The ATM and other equipment under the canopy plan to be removed. The site is currently developed with the vacant bank and drive-through canopy. The applicant is not requesting to significantly modify it further. The site has two drive aisle access points along Northwest South Outer Road. There is no public sidewalk currently along Northwest South Outer Road, and this request is not proposing to modify the site further, thus requiring a sidewalk will not be necessary. The proposed land use daycare commercial is allowed in the general business zoning district with the approval of a conditional use permit. The land use is defined in the U D C as a business that provides care, protection, and supervision of individuals away from their primary residence in a commercial service or institutional setting. Special use standards of the U D C states that these business types are required to have state licensing and a designated vehicle drop-off area that is capable of holding one car per ten licensed occupants on the site. Currently, a non-conforming pylon sign exists on the site and will be required to be removed, or a master sign plan may be submitted and approved to allow the sign prior to the business license being issued. Any other signs will be reviewed through an administrative site, site permit, sign permit. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit application with three conditions. Now, open it up for any questions.
Staff have any, or council has any questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant present? Like to come make some comments?
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Warman with Warman Architects, seventeen thirty-five Swift, North Kansas City, Missouri. With me here this evening is Mark Bertrand with Life Unlimited. Uh, we wanna thank staff for working with us. Um, we're in agreement with the conditions and we appreciate your vote tonight.
Any questions for the applicant? Good job.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will go to the public. Would anybody in the audience like to speak in support of, support of? Anyone speak in opposition to? Okay, any more comments from the council? Councilmember Edmondson.
I'd just like to say thank you. Uh, it's nice to see some of our empty buildings getting filled as we move forward, especially when they're as visible as that one is, so we appreciate you.
Any other comments? That I will close the public hearing. Next up is introduction and reading of Bill fifty-two twenty-one.
I will introduce you.
First reading of Bill five-two-two-one, and ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow the daycare commercial land use in the G B General Business Owning District located at three-five-zero-zero Northwest South Outer Road in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri, for Life Unlimited.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side?
Second reading of Bill five-two-two-one, and ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow the daycare commercial land use in the G B General Business Owning District located at three-five-zero-zero Northwest South Outer Road in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri, for Life Unlimited.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Tholen.
Aye.
Mayor Levisay.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-three-three-six.
Next, we have a public hearing for Brookside Estates at Chapman Farm. Again, if you are planning to speak on this issue, if you will stand and be sworn in. I know I have at least a couple of public appearance forms. All right, go ahead. Staff, go ahead with your report.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated June eleventh, twenty twenty-four with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication and the examiner on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four,
one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of sight, copy of letter sent to said property owners, PowerPoint presentation from Planning Commission, title for land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, twenty fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, and two emails from residents including in Planning Commission packet, revised amended P U D concept plan, letters regarding proposed project, and bill approving amended P U D concept plan. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Mr. Mallon.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike Mallon, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn. Before you this evening is a request to, for an amended P U D concept plan for the Brookside Estates at Chapman Farms project. Uh, the property is currently vacant. It is highlighted here by the black and white hatch line. Uh, Seven Highway runs north and south, um, on the screen here. This is Brookside Drive. Um, the Estates at Chapman Farms Development is here. Um, the Culver Road is down here, running east to west, uh, south of the property. Uh, the property is currently zoned S F seven, P U D R O, single-family planned unit development restricted overlay. Um, the proposed project does not rezone the property, or is not proposing to rezone the property. It is proposing to, uh, request approval of an amended P U D concept plan from, uh, the Chapman Farms P U D. The surrounding property, uh, as you can see to the east, is the same zoning, S F seven, P U D R O. The property to the south is general business county zoning. Uh, property to the immediate north is a mix of M F fourteen, P U D R O, uh, and to the north, S F seven, P U D R O, there's some agricultural zoning, some county C B zoning, and, uh, service office and other commercial zoning to the east. The property is part of the Chapman Farms, the origi, or the overall Chapman Farms development. The property has gone through a few different approvals that have been before the city council since, uh, the original Chapman Farms was approved in two thousand and four. A little bit of history for some context. The two thousand and four original Chapman Farms P U D concept plan, uh, proposed, approximately a hundred to a hundred and five lots in this area that were between twelve hundred and fourteen hundred square feet in size. Um, those original proposed homes and lots were, um, essentially sixty-six hundred square foot lots with five-foot setbacks and eleven hundred square foot homes, and twenty-eight percent open space from two thousand and four. An amended P U D concept plan was approved by council in two thousand and six, uh, that, I, let me backtrack, so that this portion, um, is highlighted here in yellow next to the Estates at Chapman Farm, which is over here. It was denoted as, uh, single-family detached for over fifty, supposed to be marketed towards a, uh, senior element. In two thousand and six, an amended P U D concept plan for the property, um, proposed ninety-seven units for over fifty, uh, uh, targeted market. Um, again, uh, twenty-eight percent open space, the sixty-six hundred square foot lots, five-foot setbacks, twelve hundred to fourteen hundred square foot homes. In two thousand and seven, down here in the bottom left, a P U D concept plan was approved for the Brookside Estates at Chapman Farms. This included ninety-three senior, single-family homes, um, at approximately three-point-one-five dwelling units an acre, sixty-six hundred square foot minimum lot size, eleven hundred square foot minimum home size with eight-foot setbacks, uh, side setbacks, and twenty percent, twenty-eight percent open space. In two thousand and twenty-one, another amended P U D concept plan was approved for eighty single-family homes. The senior component was removed at two-point-seven-three dwelling units an acre, again with the sixty-six hundred square foot minimum lots, eleven hundred square foot minimum home size. Uh, this time it requested five-foot minimum interior side setbacks and had a resulting thirty-seven percent open space. The proposed project before you this evening, the amended P U D concept plan, uh, proposes eighty single-family lots, um, on twenty-nine-point-two-five acres. Again, at two-point-seven-three dwelling units an acre, um, sixty-six hundred square foot lot size, a minimum lot or home size of, which has now been adjusted since the Planning Commission meeting, which I'll describe here in a little bit further, of fourteen hundred square feet, again, five-foot interior side setbacks and thirty-seven percent open space. So that is a little bit of history. Each time, so we use the term amended P U D concept plan because the original P U D concept plan from two thousand and four, each of the subsequent approvals in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and twenty-one are all amendments to that original. So that's why the term amended has been included. So again, the P U D concept plan includes eighty single-family lots and six common open space tracks. Access to the site is provided, so in this, this is the drawing of the property. North is to the left. East is to the top of the screen, so this is tilted to the sideways. Um, three phases, uh, eighty lots. Access to the site is provided from Seven Highway, which is in this location, will come off of Brookside Drive and connect into the Estates at Chapman Farm subdivision to the east, or to the west, I'm sorry. Uh, another access drive will come up off of Mason School Road, uh, to the north, providing a secondary point of access to the subdivision. Uh, all new streets will be local residential streets. However, collector sidewalk improvements will be required along Brookside Drive and Mason School Road. As part of the amended P U D concept plan, minimum lot and development standards are required to be established. Um, P U, the applicant is requesting reduced lot sizes and setbacks from the neighborhood lot standards. These include a reduction in the minimum lot size from seventy-two hundred under the, um, U D C that was in effect at the time of the original Chapman Farms development, which is what this is reviewed under, not the U D C that's in effect today. So that was a, a reduction from seventy-two hundred to sixty-six hundred square feet, a minimum lot width of sixty feet, which is a reduction from sixty-five feet. For non-cul-de-sac lots, cul-de-sac lots will be a minimum of fifty feet. Plan also requests a reduction in corner side setbacks from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet, and side setbacks from eight feet to five feet. Landscape buffers for the site are required adjacent to commercial zoning districts. To the east in this location and these locations, part of Track C and a little bit of Track A. The minimum open space requirement per the Chapman Farms P U D is twenty-eight percent. The site is providing thirty-seven, or thirty-six-point-eight-nine, or rounded up to thirty-seven percent, or ten-point-seven-nine acres of open space, meeting and exceeding the requirement from the P U D. The amenities include an asphalt trail that will run along the stream buffer portion of the property, as can be seen here. Um, the trail will run through the project, connect up and down, and then is providing two trail connections to the west, to the existing trail in the Estates at Chapman Farms. Uh, that trail network, uh, and roadway network as described does meet the original P U D concept plan from Chapman Farms from two thousand and four, which can be seen in the drawing here. Um, it's better identified in the two thousand and six plan with the trail network coming down through that, um, stream buffer drainage area and then connecting to the west throughout the Chapman, or Estates at Chapman Farms. And then that trail is supposed to connect and go north on up through and all the way through all of Chapman Farms, creating a big multimodal loop. That was one of the intents of the original Chapman Farms development. Uh, the road network, again, was also originally contemplated in the original, um, P U D and all the subsequent amended P U D concept plans to have a connection to Mason School Road and to Seven Highway through Brookside Drive. Proposed minimum floor area classification, uh, as presented at the Planning Commission, was eleven hundred square feet. Based upon the, um, feedback received from that Planning Commission meeting, the applicant has provided a revised amended P U D concept plan, which increased the minimum livable floor area from eleven hundred square feet to fourteen hundred square feet. At the Planning Commission meeting, um, the applicant was requesting a modification to the minimum livable floor area to be more than one classification down or step down to the adjacent subdivision at the Estates at Chapman Farms. By raising that minimum to fourteen hundred square feet, that request for a modification is no longer necessary. The minimum square footage, uh, at the Estates is, uh, seventeen hundred for a portion and sixteen hundred for another portion, which is, uh, a class G, uh, minimum of sixteen hundred. So by upping it to fourteen hundred, these are now at a class H and therefore are within that one step-down requirement, and they're no longer asking for that as a modification in the revised plan that is before you this evening. The applicant, um, is also requesting, uh, minimum interior side setback reductions from eight feet to six feet. Uh, again, the sixty-six hundred square feet and the minimum lot frontage to sixty feet. Um, to help offset the reduction in those standards, uh, and the houses being, uh, located and set closer together, um, the, uh, city, uh, has requested and the applicant has provided increased architectural elevations, um, and design standards for the front elevations, including requirements for front porches, architectural detailing, um, and other, um, design elements to help, uh, make the streetscape, uh, more appealing and aesthetically pleasing to help offset, um, the reduction in lot size and setback. The architectural styles are predominantly two-story, or ranch style, as provided in the P U D concept plan, with a mix of craftsmen and bungalow-style houses. Um, these are the proposed conceptual elevations. So there are eight proposed architectural models included in this concept plan. Design standards include material standards, masonry requirements, masonry wrap requirements, in which it, the masonry actually, uh, wraps around the edge from the front elevation to the side elevation to help, um, bolster those side elevation, uh, design standards, uh, enhanced front entry design features for the front doors, enhanced garage door design, and other decorative elements. Staff has reviewed the proposed development under the P U D concept plans that have been appro, or the original P U D concept plan, and the applicable sections of the U D C that are in place today, the Unified Development Code that was in place at the, um, uh, time of the original Chapman Farms approval, and staff believes that the minimum request for modifications for lot sizes, lot width setbacks are warranted by the enhanced architectural design standards, uh, the increased landscape buffering and open space, and the protection of the stream buffer that runs through the site. The proposed plan is in keeping with the original Chapman Farms P U D, uh, in terms of the roadway network, um, size of lots, style of development, and the trail connections as provided in the original, um, P U D concept plan. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on June tenth and voted three to three, uh, on a motion to approve the plan. As it was a three-to-three vote, that motion failed, and therefore the Planning Commission did not recommend approval of this. Again, in response to that, the applicant has in, or withdrawn the request to modify the, um, step-down requirement and increase the minimum livable floor area from eleven hundred square feet to fourteen hundred square feet as provided in the attached plans. Staff recommends approval of the P U D concept plan, or amended P U D concept plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. Um, I do, I do hear you when you say that they have moved from a thousand square foot to fourteen hundred square foot, and that seems to be in the right direction from everything I've heard from the residents. However, proportionally, that's still on the same sized lot, the sixty-six hundred foot lot with the sixty-foot frontage and the setbacks. Um, why wouldn't those lots have been increased in size as well? I, I, that would, that would probably be the first question, um, because that is, that is really gonna be challenging to see those size of houses on those small of a lot.
Uh, I believe the applicant can talk more about their housing mix, but, uh, I believe that they have a, um, most of the models will have a walkout basement or finished basement, basement option or a two-story in order to get the finished min, minimum livable floor area up to fourteen hundred.
Councilmember Kayler.
Were you there?
Yep.
Help me under, stand, make sure I understand this correct. You said in two thousand and four, in the original, there was a walking trail going to join into the existing, correct?
That's correct.
This has always been part of the plan ever since two thousand and four, which is, I'm not a math whiz, but that's twenty years ago.
That's correct.
All right. And, um, my other two questions will be for the applicant. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Cole Pepper.
Yeah, I just would like, uh, you to address how we are looking at this under standards that we set in twenty years ago, and compared to our standards today. Uh, I hear a lot about, well, back then, we could do this, so this is what we're having to use as our guide. Can you address that, please?
Yes, so, um, it's, it's similar to the way a, a P U D, um, or plan development today gets approved, and if a plan development is approved, uh, today, um, it, and depending on how it's written, it would say that these are the development standards that are applicable to the project going forward, and there's a plan included, uh, and then therefore that becomes the zoning on the property essentially, um, going forward. And so, when this went through in two thousand and four, there was a Unified Development Code in effect at the time. And so, all of Chapman Farms, when we've reviewed their concept plans that have come after that date, have been reviewed under that, essentially the nineteen ninety-six U D C. Where there are elements that did not get spoken to, we would apply the code that is in effect today, or the processes that are in effect today. So, um, the minimum lot size has not changed, so the reduction from seventy-two hundred to sixty-six hundred would still be, that is today's standard as well. Uh, the eight-foot setbacks is, um, the same as well. Um, the sixty-five foot minimum lot frontage is the same as well. So a lot of those elements are the same today. The, um, the step-down classification is the same.
So how, how many years do we go before we say, no, we're not... So how many years do we go before we say, no, we're not going back forty years and using those same standards?
That is, one of the elements of a plan development is that it locks it in place or when it's being written. So if it was written that way and it was intended to be that way, then that plan development stays with the property and goes forever. That's the zoning on the property. Depending on how those are written, in today's standards, we would write a new PUD to oftentimes say, the development standards in effect or this development shall follow the zoning standards in effect at the time of development is one of the way we've updated our process to make sure that development under a PUD that comes twenty years later looks at the standards that are in place twenty years later. We learn from the past sometimes. So other times, a developer and the council will want to lock in those development standards for the life of that project. And so that way council has a guarantee of what is going to be built on that property that when they approve it, then that's the plan that's in place, that's the plan that's going to get built, whether it's built five years or ten years or twenty years from now. And that also gives the developer that locked-in zoning on the property.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ayers. Do you still have something?
My honor? You said, and I think some of this is going to be repetitive, but the proposal is to go from eleven hundred square feet to fourteen hundred square feet.
That, yes, that is what the applicant...
And you mentioned then that... My question was going to be, where's that coming from? But I think you said that the proposal may include second stories and/or a walkout basement area. So two questions to that would be, does the topography lend itself to walkout basements?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and then the next question is, how many square feet of living space would the stairs required eat up? Would that be like fifty square feet or seventy square feet?
It could be, depending on the size of the staircase. The code provisions allow that any finished floor area that is livable, finished floor area with drywall and walls and electrical and air conditioner, you know, HVAC systems and all that, that does count towards the minimum livable floor area. So if somebody finishes a portion of their basement or the entire basement or the upper story of a house, that all counts towards the minimum livable floor area. The only portions of the house that would not count are the garage and any portions that are left unfinished.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Mall, I wanted to ask real quick, in your history here, you outlined the two thousand and twenty-one plan, and maybe you mentioned this and I just didn't hear it. How significantly different is this from what was approved in two thousand and twenty-one?
This is essentially, what was shown to planning commission was essentially the exact same plan from two thousand and twenty-one. Based upon the feedback from the planning commission, they increased the minimum floor area to fourteen hundred. That is the only difference between now and two thousand and twenty-one. Each of these plans, so the two thousand and seven plan expired after a two-year window. So then they brought that back in two thousand and twenty-one after another failed development attempt for a different housing type entirely. And then the two thousand and twenty-one plan expired after two years. And so when the developer first approached the city, he said, I want to, I just want to go forward with what was approved in two thousand and twenty-one, and we said that plan has expired, you have to go back through the planning commission and city council approvals, and they said, we don't want to change anything. And so the plan shown to planning commission did not change anything. The plan before you, the revised plan, has only changed that increase in the minimum floor area.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present, want to come make some comments? Were you sworn in earlier? I thought you might have come after that. If you'll get sworn in and then give us your name and address for the record.
Do you saw me swear in this one? You're about to give this case...
I do.
Eric Graneman.
Give your name and address for the record.
Eric Graneman, one zero eight zero four West Seventy-Sixth Street, Shawnee.
Go ahead.
So I wanted to clarify that our intention was to go to fourteen hundred or higher because that's the quality and the price point we wanted to hit, which is above the minimum of eleven hundred. And at the advice of staff, we left everything the same just to streamline the process. So it's not a big, you know, it's not a change for what we're doing. We want to put a high-quality product in there, so.
Any questions from the council for the applicant? Councilmember Culpepper.
Yeah, I have a couple, just on that particular subject. The Chapman Estates, I know that they're, I don't know what their minimum is, fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred, something like that, but their average is three thousand. So can we expect the same sort of thing on this particular section? You say minimum fourteen hundred, but are some of your plans going to be more than that? And are you building these? I believe at the planning commission it came up that there would be other builders.
Oh, we have put together a team of builders that we use, and we use them in our other projects, and we're very happy with them, and they do a very high-quality job. They've won a lot of awards, and they're custom home builders. And I find that our customers are usually older, they're on their third, fourth home, they know what they want, and they usually build much... They tend to build bigger and better than what we, you know, where we set the minimums, so.
Okay, and also the phrase senior living, I think, has been thrown in here several times. Is this going to be restricted?
No.
So why are we saying senior living?
That was a, sorry, if I may interrupt, that was the original approval back in two thousand and four, two thousand and six, and two thousand and seven. When it was approved in two thousand and twenty-one, the senior designation was removed.
Okay, so that is not applicable now?
No.
Because it was also discussed at the planning or brought up at the planning meeting with that phrase being in there. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes, your honor. You mentioned that you were originally going after the fourteen hundred square foot, but the original plan said a thousand, so that's what you applied for.
It said eleven, and at the advice of staff, we didn't change anything because this had been approved before, and we wanted to streamline this process, obviously.
And if somebody, the minimum is fourteen hundred, but you say somebody may actually want to build larger than that, and that's, that'd be a great investment next to subdivision, which has a lot of investment as well. But how about the number of lots? Would you be flexible on that? Because a really nice house on that size of a lot just seems kind of odd.
Well, we have to respond to where the market is, and the market is shifting because of interest costs, because of material costs. People are moving towards higher quality, but less yard and less dense, you know, less, you know, less... They want better, not bigger. And so we have to respond to the marketplace and what our customers want. What I don't want is factory housing. I don't want cookie cutter. I don't want a bunch of cardboard boxes. I don't want to live in that, and I don't want to put that in.
Councilmember Kayler.
So you have a group of builders, and help me understand this, because these group of builders, are they going to build off the same plans that you present? Or are they having their own set of plans to be put in here?
They have to use approved plans. I presume there's a process if they want another one approved with the city, but it has to be congruent with the neighborhood.
So basically, we have the four, four plans or the layouts, so to speak, then you're saying no?
I can answer this question.
I'll let you take this one.
You'll need to give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Sally Moore, one four three oh three Whipper Will Lane. Thank you. We have some pictures if you want to show them.
On the PowerPoint?
Yeah, that'd be great. The, when we first met with the city engineering department about this, we discussed the previous plans that were approved by the city council a few years ago, and I did ask that question specifically because when we work in these custom build environments, people come in and they, you know, well, I like this, but I want to change this, and I want to do this way, and I want to bump out that extra bedroom, and what if we finished a little bit more in the basement? So these plans that you see before you would be like the bare minimum of what these builders would do. Most of them have their own ranch reverse floor plans. There's only a certain amount of ways you can, you know, build a three-bedroom ranch or a reverse floor plan. They all kind of start to look alike after a little bit, but this would be a general starting point, but nothing would be less of quality than what you see up there today, those renderings. So each one of our builders kind of does something a little bit different. I put together a little PowerPoint presentation, but we can just zip through it. I just kind of wanted you to see some examples of the builder's work, because I think that's one of the primary things that Eric wanted to stress to you tonight is, yes, the fourteen hundred minimum is a minimum. It would be really hard... I can't remember the last time I sold a fourteen hundred square foot home, right? That might be fourteen hundred on the main level, but we're going to have more finished downstairs or we're going to have more finished upstairs. It's just really hard to squeeze what you need in there. And when you're talking about the size of the lots, yes, that can be a challenge. You see this in some other communities that are going up around town. But one of the things that we like to look towards is places where people are already doing this and doing it at a high level. I have pulled up probably a half dozen different floor plans from the Texas area, some homes that I've been through where my folks live, and they have a really good way of getting this done. I mean, it is more of a narrow footprint, but the architecture on it is just absolutely beautiful. So if we could flip through some of these, this is just kind of showing you what the builders do. These will be high-end homes, the absolute lowest starting point that I could come up with with a lot development cost. I can't imagine us being able to build anything under four fifty out there. So these are not going to be cookie cutter homes, entry-level homes whatsoever, but they are going to be, as Eric mentioned, homes that have less yard to care for. There's an option that we could consider doing more of a maintenance provided. I don't know where that was, where the senior living may have come up, but to do that, you do need a smaller footprint to make it economical in the monthly HOA fees. Does that make some sense? But basically what we did, like what Eric said, was come to you with exactly what this council approved a couple of years ago, and then just bumped up the minimum square footage after the objections from the planning commission meeting, because we knew going in they weren't going to build them that small.
So my understanding then is these are, certain plans that are on here are just kind of what is going to go there, but if I have one of your choice builders, we could have one of several others?
Yes, that's possible, but everything would have to be approved by the city.
Okay.
So like this first plan you see there is called, it's a Design Basics Plan, it's called Pelham Park. There's probably half a dozen builders in Kansas City that are using this exact plan, but they're all doing something a little different with it.
And I understand that. I'm just trying to get to the point where the builders, you have multiple builders, it's not just one builder in the complex.
No, that's correct.
You have multiple builders, but multiple builders could be building any one of these plans, or they could be doing one other.
Yep.
And it, but it just still concerns me that your, you know, fourteen hundred is the minimum, and we can put a two thousand or a twenty-one hundred square feet on these small lots, and that's just my concern. But anyway, thank you, your honor.
Councilmember Culpepper.
I just want to throw one more thing in. With the five-foot setback on the side lots, that's not very much. You just take a five-foot from the house to the property line, and then you stick a big air conditioner on it or a heat pump on it. You don't have five feet anymore. You're lucky if you can get a, you can't, I can guarantee you I have in my neighborhood. You can't even get the mower around it.
So were these concerns brought up in two thousand and twenty-one?
Yes.
Did anybody worry about it?
I bring them up all the time.
Yeah.
Whenever I see a five-foot wire.
Right.
Because it's a problem.
Right. But it was overcomeable a couple of years ago, or what was the workaround?
I don't remember. Each one was settled, but I mean, I just am voicing my concern there.
Sure, sure.
Because five feet, that's ten feet from foundation to the foundation. As they say, you stick an air conditioner out there, that doesn't leave any property between the air conditioning unit and the property line.
Mike, how has this worked in other developments with the same setbacks?
Oftentimes, the developments that have the five-foot setbacks, trying to accomplish more of that patio home look, usually want to put the emphasis on the front and the back, and then the side setbacks end up becoming more of a rock landscape feature. There's, a lot of them don't even have grass and that because, but that's where the window wells on the, in the basement and the air conditioning units can sometimes get put, or the air conditioning units can get put in the back.
That was going to be my thought, was moving them towards the back of the property.
Yeah.
Would make more sense.
Councilmember Kayler.
But a lot of these later have put their air conditioners up higher on brackets off the ground.
Correct.
Not even on the ground, so I just started to throw that in.
Councilmember Erickson.
Excuse me, you mentioned two thousand and twenty-one. I was one of the objectors to this in two thousand and twenty-one. Most of my objection, if not all of it, was based upon the renderings that you have like that are up there right now. There's no way that a five-foot space could fit into that. It seems deceptive to me. That's what I said in two thousand and twenty-one, and it still does, that there's too much green space to fit in what you're planning on. On all of them, it looks like, I don't see how that could possibly happen.
I think what you have to look at is the build line of the plan and the build box.
I'm just looking at the pictures, excuse me.
Right, well, the pictures are...
I know.
I would just focus on the house, but the actual blueprint shows the width of each floor plan, and each one of these floor plans was chosen so it would fit inside what they call the build box. So those renderings, these all came from that company or most of them came from Design Basics, that does account for that fitting in that box.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I'll just say it one more time. I don't, I can see the footprints, I can read the numbers and all that, but the photography or the sketches or the renderings are important to me as well, because that's what I would expect it to look like based upon the presentation, including the interior finishes that you have. That's what I would expect.
Right.
I know we can't write that down.
Right.
And say that, but it just doesn't appear that way to me. That's just between you and me and the rest of the thing.
Well, no one would pay four hundred and fifty thousand for a stripped-down house either, so they kind of have to finish them to that level.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, we'll go to the audience then. Sir, I know I have two speaker appearance forum for opposition. Let's start if there's anybody in the audience in support of, support of. Okay, opposition due, first I have Eric Flynn. If you haven't been sworn in, let us know, otherwise just give your name and address.
Hi, hi.
Okay.
My name is Eric Flynn. I live at eleven fourteen Southwest Conch Circle in Blue Springs. That is, in fact, inside the estates of Chapman Farms, and I'm coming to you tonight as nothing more than a resident of the estate of Chapman Farms. When I found out about this about a month ago, I thought, okay, development, it's a natural cause of growth. As a businessman who's retired recently, I understand that. But I take exception, and I'm almost offended that in the cover letter for Brookside, they say they're going to play on the estates of Chapman Farms to include calling a six-thousand six-hundred foot lot an estate. An estate lot by definition in two thousand and twenty by the Realtors Association has been reduced to twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-three square feet, about half of what the developer here would like to call an estate. To achieve this, to even achieve the definition of an estate home, he'll have to go way deep or way up. That's cookie cutter homes on that small of a lot. I also take issue with the developer thinking that our private walking trails are theirs publicly. We just paid thirty thousand dollars this week. Mr. Easley can attest, he's the president of our homeowners association, he's in attendance tonight. We paid thirty thousand dollars of our money, not Blue Springs, not this developer, our money. We've also paid seventy thousand dollars this year to bring our private pool up to snuff for all of our residents. With this new community, and you can take a look at their plan, they don't make any plan for their pool, but they are going to put hundreds of new families here with our pool less than two hundred yards away. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned that the trails go through our community, and now people that we don't even know are going to be given free access to that? I'm concerned very much about the security. I highly recommend the council to take a look at this, because I think there is deception. I would like you to consider asking Brookside to change their development. They can be Brookside at Chapman Farms, there are other places around here, but to say they're an estate, they're playing off of our hard work, not theirs. They're playing off of our community, not his. If you want to be successful, I learned this in business, make your own success, don't play off of someone else. And yes, I agree with the councilman, those homes look like they're more mid-grade, maybe beginner-level homes. Most of them have two-car garages. If you check the our charter, we're all three-car homes. If there's a sixteen hundred square foot home in our community, I challenge you to approve it.
Mr. Flynn, that's your time, I appreciate it.
I thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Aaron Rimmel or Rimmel.
Hello, everyone. This is my first time doing this, so bear with me. Uh, number one, thank you for getting my name right. Um, generally, if Rimmel is what someone calls me, that's not the worst thing. Um, so it's probably good. But Rimmel, thank you. Uh, I'd really appreciate you guys having me up here today. Um, I'll try and make it quick. My concern, and I appreciate it, it looks like they really are trying to do a good thing and and I appreciate that. I like the development, we all know it needs to happen. I don't know if you guys have been out near our area at Seven and Culburn lately, but all it is is compressed housing. That's all they're building anymore out near us. If you've looked over by Mason and anywhere in there, that school is getting just hammered with people. And that's why it was so great whenever it was senior living. And we tried to fight our last developer, you know, a couple of years ago and and keep this as senior living. Because if you have that tiny compressed housing that they do, where are they parking? It's a two-car garage, they're not fixing, not putting three-car garages. So now they're littering their cars across their streets, down Brookside Drive, they're going to be everywhere. And if you've driven down through our neighborhood, the developer had all this planned, the one before the other one, with beautiful trees going down both sides. And there's no way with a five-foot setback that all of these, this beautiful drive that was originally in your PUD is still going to be there. Um, and so I'm just concerned that Blue Springs is getting away from this idea of, you know, just open space. I mean, if COVID taught us anything, it's that we need to be outside, we need to be in our yards, we need land. And it's not that I need to live five feet from my neighbor where I I still, even if I get outside, I can't get away, right? That's why we move out into the country. Um, and so I, I don't know, that's one of my big complaints. The other one, again, I I share the same thing. I would love it if uh the developer looks and says, you know what? I agree our attempt at providing a trail is not fantastic. It literally goes through the middle and then cuts to us. You can't go in a circle on theirs. There's no complete loop, they can walk side by side, or they have to come to ours and dig in, right? I'm, to be honest with you, yes, we spent thirty grand, and it's a lot of money, and it needs probably another fifty. Um, but we need to be, if they want to come in and actually do more trails around their area where it's more of an environment that they were originally trying to do with the PUD, and that's build a whole environment in this area where once again, people get outside and they get to the green space that we're getting ready to replace with just rocks and barely a place to walk. So at at the end of the day, I don't know if I've forgotten anything. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, one one zero nine Southwest Conch Way.
We would have got there.
Yeah, thank you, it's on the form. So thank you, guys, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else that wants to speak in opposition to? I do not have a public here.
Me, sir.
Come on up. If you haven't been sworn in, let us know, otherwise give your name and address.
I have, sir, I've been sworn in. My name is John Easley, I live at nine three zero four Southwest Orca Court, that is in the estates of Chapman Farms. I am also the president of the HOA at the estates of Chapman Farms. First, let me say I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me and uh as I speak on behalf of a hundred and thirteen homeowners. Let's first be clear, um, last week, this presentation was made and they brought it back before you. We just put a different shade of lipstick on the pig. What is offensive to me is when this was presented last week, it was eleven hundred square feet was the minimum. But somehow in seven days, we found three hundred square feet. They will tell you that eleven hundred wasn't the bare minimum, but it was it was always going to be more. Then why wasn't fourteen hundred the bare minimum to begin with? That is the issue. Another issue that we have as residents in the home at the estates of Chapman Farms, the developer had a meeting with residents on the north side off of Moreland School Road. Do you know the eight, do you know the residents who were not invited to that? The estates of Chapman Farms. I checked with the board members to make sure that maybe I missed an invitation. We did not miss an invitation, we were not invited. We did not get to put in any input or have any of our questions asked prior to last week. Seven days later, here we are, and we put that new shade of lipstick on the pig. And what they're trying to do is get you to buy off on it. I don't think they're evil people, but I do think there are issues that are before you that need to be answered before a a vote of yes could be had. They bring up two thousand and twenty-one, let's be honest, what was two thousand and twenty-one? Let me go back, I'm old, but I'll remember, that was COVID. The hearing for that was on the phone. Uh, for everybody who have, who was present for that hearing, it was very difficult for us to get our thoughts across. So let's be clear. Now, when we talk about these homes, and and many of you uh are far smarter than me, but you have latched on to the one thing that my grandpa taught me as a farmer back in Stanbury, Missouri. You cannot put ten pounds of cow manure in a five-pound sack. And that's what we're trying to do with these homes. And we're selling you on these trails, these trails, these trails. The note on there says that they've got a wooden bridge. Putting a wooden bridge on asphalt that goes between homes, if you look at the trail layout, most of it goes between homes. If putting a wooden bridge on asphalt that goes be home be between homes makes it a trail, then by all rights, me putting on a Louis Vuitton shirt makes me a male model. Because that's not the way it works. And it should not be right that they should connect into our trails with no consideration. But had we had the meeting with them, we could have asked that question and maybe made some kind of accommodation, but it wasn't had. Um, and we go into cookie cutter homes, as as you've said, sir, they've given you eight basic models and they want to sell for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They jumped up three hundred square feet in seven days. They've got to make that money back somewhere. That money gets made back very easy. Here's your eight home styles, pick one of the eight, because going to custom plans is going to cost you more. I strongly urge you all to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Easley. Do I have anybody else in the audience that wants to speak in opposition to? Opposition to. Okay, any other questions from the council, comments from the council before we close the public hearing? Close the public hearing. Next is introduction and reading of Bill five two 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 for the planned unit development.
I would introduce.
First reading of Bill five two two two, an ordinance approving the Brookside Estates at Chapman Farms amended planned unit development concept plan.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Councilmember Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor, um, I do like the fact that they've gone to fourteen hundred square feet. Uh, I think that is positive. Um, and uh, but the thing that still gets me is the size of the lots and and the rendition. Uh, normally those renditions are what you would expect to see. And and you're right, there is no homes five foot or ten foot away from the other ones in that in those pictures. Um, I would hope the applicant could, you know, hear hear that concern. Uh, at the moment, I'm not going to be able to vote in in favor of this with that situation.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Culpepper.
I just want to say that I'm a little concerned when I hear the fact that there was no discussion with the residents at the estate of Chapman Farms. Um, I think that that's your immediate neighbor, um, so I'm very concerned about that particular issue.
May I address that? We were given a list of people to invite within a certain radius of the development. We did send out a letter.
Okay, let's uh.
So that's.
You've got you've got your statement, let's hold off.
Well, we were never given an opportunity to say that.
Any other council members have any discussion? All right, all in favor, oh, Councilmember Harris.
I just want to say my concern about this is not just the renditions of the graphics, it's also like Councilmember Fowler said, smaller lots decreasing things by below standard, and I I can't support that.
No other discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side?
Aye.
Aye.
I would say that fails, can we roll call that?
Yes. Councilmember Erickson.
No.
Edmondson?
No.
Culpepper?
No.
Kayler?
Absolutely no.
Follen?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Mayor Levisay?
Aye.
A motion fails.
I will decide.
All right. Then there will be no second reading. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for Southgate Villas. Again, if you plan to speak in favor or if you plan to speak on this at all, please stand and be sworn in for Southgate Villas. Go ahead. Okay, introduction.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit entered into the record. City Council information form dated June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four with the following attachments. Staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication, the examiner on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use section Blue Spring code of ordinance by reference, two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, letters regarding proposed project, bill approving the rezoning and bill approving the planned development concept plan.
Staff, go ahead with your report.
Dave McCumber, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city. Before you this evening, our request for a rezoning and a PD concept plan for Southgate Villas, a proposed independent senior housing development consisting of fourteen duplex buildings on a total of tw- for a total of twenty-eight units located at seven hundred Southwest Southgate Drive. The proposed project will be plotted as fourteen lots and two tracks. The first request is to rezone the subject property from RE residential estate to PDR planned development residential. In twenty, uh, the two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan included the subject property as neighborhoods, which are defined as areas for residential liv- living arranged in a connected pattern of streets and blocks to provide access to civic and neighborhood amenities. The comp plan also states that the areas designated as neighborhoods should have connections to gathering places and neighborhood centers to meet daily needs. Within the comp plan, the S one area plan adopted as part of that comprehensive plan designates the subject as, subject property as mixed-density neighborhood, which is defined as mixed-density uh for residential living arranged in neighborhood in a neighborhood pattern with access to supporting uses. Net densities for these areas are typically five to twelve units per acre. Southgate Villas is pur- is proposing five point nine eight dwelling units per acre across the site. The proposed rezoning is in accordance with the two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan and S one area plan, which classifies the area as mixed-density neighborhood. The rezoning to planned development will allow for a mixed mix of residential densities in the general area. Approval of the rezoning application would allow for the existing four point six eight acre parcel to be developed and add new housing units to the city, more specifically, units that are designed to accommodate an aging population. Denial of the rezoning application will result in the property remaining undeveloped for an unknown period of time. The subject property can be developed under the requirements of the UDC. However, the applicant is requesting modifications through a PD concept plan. Staff believes that all requested modifications are warranted due to the size of the property and the constraints of its irregular shape. This rezoning will not reduce the ability of the city or other government agencies to provide services, facilities, or programs. Additional improvements to provide adequate services include utilities, stormwater, and a new street will be provided. The requested zoning change would allow the property to be developed in a manner that would provide more a more appropriate buffer between Seven Highway and the single-family subdivision to the west without an as an intense of a use as commercial development. As part of the PD standard, the applicant is proposing the following. All development standards will follow the duplex standard lot building type. The existing site is undeveloped and heavily wooded. A small creek runs through the site. This creek will be relocated to an underground stormwater pipe that is tied to the into the development's detention system. The applicant is proposing the following modifications through the PD standards related to either the building type or development standards. Per UDC section four zero seven point zero eight zero residential design standards, uh, there is a request to increase the garage facade coverage from twenty-five percent up to thirty-nine point one percent. And per UDC section four zero five point zero two zero residential building type standards, uh, there is a request to decrease the minimum lot size for lots twelve and thirteen from nine thousand square feet to eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four square feet. And the second request of that section of the UDC is to decrease the minimum lot width from eighty feet to seventy-seven feet. The following enhancements have been provided. Garage doors that are set back seven feet from the front building line. Front doors with enhanced features, including glass, trellises, and lighting. An enhanced garage door design that adds details, including windows, lighting, and trellises to help mitigate the additional facade coverage. The development includes a public street of Southwest Cherry Lane, which will end in a cul-de-sac. The street is twenty-eight feet wide in width to the back of the curb and includes a five-foot-wide public sidewalk along its west side. Sidewalks will be added to the south side of Southwest Southgate Drive and the west side of Seven Highway to the southern property line of the development. Road improvements and construction of Southwest Cherry Lane include the required sidewalks, including the required sidewalks shall be completed prior to occupancy of the first building in this development. The applicant has provided a conceptual landscape plan, which includes street trees. The the frontage type is classified as terrace according to the UDC, and the terrace frontage type extends full width across all of the lots. The units are approximately, or are thirteen hundred thirty square feet of livable space. Each building's facade provides four-sided architecture utilizing a mix of building materials, including stone, masonry, stucco, vinyl lap siding, and vinyl shake siding in a mix of colors. Outdoor lighting will be reviewed in the final PD plan. Parking requirements have been met and provide two off-street parking spaces per dwelling, one of which is within a garage. Staff reviewed the rezoning and concept plan under the criteria outlined in the staff report. Based on this criteria, staff recommends approval of the rezoning application. Staff also recommends approval of the planned development concept plan application with one condition. And with that, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Any questions from the council staff, Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor, uh, could you bring up this uh Adobe page three forty-eight of the packet? Um, I guess the up top there is Missouri Highway seven, and to the far right is that lot ten. Can you tell me the distance from the property line there, the 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 bowl line up? Yeah, right, right in there, two, Seven Highway, what what is that distance? It looks to be less than half of the width of the road.
So the for the, are you talking about the rear setback of that building on Lot ten?
Yeah.
So it's twenty feet uh build line from the from there to the that property line that abuts the right of way?
Oh, to the residence that that that's the distance to the building number ten? Is that is that what you're saying that twenty twenty feet setback is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but what about the property line there, two, Seven Highway?
To like the curb or the street edge?
That looks about like twenty feet too.
Yeah, I mean, by eyeball, it looks like about that, yes.
Yep. Um, I guess that's where I get a lot of concern here is that up and down seven, we don't really see residences that close to Seven Highway. Um, normally throughout Seven Highway, we see some businesses. I agree, this thing may not be deep enough for a business. Um, but putting residences that close to the Seven Highway um just seems very odd to me as well. Uh, I, the this is kind of an odd property being real, I mean, residential estate is owned. I realize you're not going to be able to put in twelve thousand square foot lots and and do estate housing there. Um, but I also don't know about having housing that close to the road. We did, we did allow some housing way down south by uh Lead Bank. Um, there was some property there, but I remember the setbacks off of seven being quite quite a bit larger because I talked about kids kicking their ball and could could a ball actually be kicked onto Seven Highway from there? And it seemed very unlikely. This looks like, you know, you're saying it's going to be senior living, so maybe not the kids. But it just seems this is very close to Seven Highway, that that's definitely my concern.
Councilmember Culpepper.
Any feedback from staff on that?
Yeah, so the project you're probably referencing was is one of two. One, one is a kind of across the street, which was the, um, I believe is the fifth phase of Eagles Ridge, uh, where they proposed some single-family homes in a formerly commercial zoning district. And the other was down, uh, it's called the Retreat at Chapman Farms. And, um, those did have the same, uh, or the the required twenty-five foot minimum setback. Uh, there was also a landscape buffer that was required because they were single-family homes. And at the time, um, through the P D, uh, the developer proposed and the staff worked with them to provide a solid, um, either masonry fence or, um, more substantial fence than just a wood, you know, picket-style fence, traditional privacy fence to help alleviate some of the noise concerns and and provide a buffer to those residential. So that's probably what you're remembering is the combination of that landscape buffer, um, that's required for a single family. And then also the fence, uh, provisioned out at the retreat, which was just north of Lead Bank.
The landscape buffer wouldn't be required on this?
Um, because it's two-family, um, I'd have to double-check the U D C, uh, as to whether it is or if there's a either a it's either a landscape buffer or which we don't sometimes put in a tracks now so that it's maintained common by the H O A. Or in this case where it's going to be maintained by, um, an eight, you know, like an H O A for maintenance provided. Sometime we'll put, uh, that landscape buffer in a a landscape easement that actually falls on the lot so that the house is still set back the same amount of distance. So, um, the developer has not proposed a landscape tract because of the width of the property. Um, and the fact that the Seven Highway right-of-way is more than substantial in this area and actually takes up quite a bit extra land, especially in the northeast portion and portion adjacent to that detention pond, how the right-of-way jogs into the west. So, um, but I don't believe, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, if if they propose any special kind of fencing or help, anything to help buffer those, uh, dwelling units to Seven Highway?
Uh, no, not that, uh, not that I can recall.
Mr. Mallon, since we're on this question, um, I know we don't have a project this far south yet, but we're kind of working our way down Seven Highway with sidewalks. Just to Councilmember Fowler's point, does this consider space to put a sidewalk on the side if that were to continue south seven?
Yes, as shown in the drawing, there is a, um, sidewalk proposed along South Seven Highway.
Okay.
The dark gray line is a proposed sidewalk down there.
And that would be pretty close to right up against Seven Highway there?
It would still be, um, detached from the Seven Highway curb, so it would be set back, um, probably five feet.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Colby.
Yeah, I'm concerned about lot ten also, but I I'm curious of why we are putting the detention pond. We have one house that's going to sit between the street and the detention pond. Why would we do that as opposed to putting the detention pond on the corner? Uh, and I'm sure topography has something to do with it, but why wouldn't we do that? And at least have a little bit of, um, better look as you come into that area rather than a house and then a detention pond? Maybe that's for the applicant, I I just find that odd.
Yeah, I think the applicant's designers could probably speak to why they place the detention pond in that particular location.
Right, thanks.
Councilmember Edmondson.
Thank you. Uh, staff, help me out, remind me, what's required parking for for this duplex? What are required in the number of parking spaces?
First, independent senior living, it's one point five parking spaces per dwelling.
Does that count the garage, I take it also?
Yes.
Okay. Good. My concern is always on these things, I I don't know anybody that's it's married that has just one car. I mean, they've all got two cars, most of the time trucks, and we end up crowding vehicles in a drive because they use a garage for storage because it's a slab house. We've seen this in numerous other projects around town. And now you have two cars in the drive because you can't get one in the in the garage. Well, you can't get two in the drive because they're too big, so now you got one out in the street. So, um, it just seems again, uh, cramming a lot in when we really, we know we're not going to be able to get it done.
Any other questions from the council staff? Councilmember Erickson.
Um, you said thirteen hundred plus square feet per unit, correct?
Thirteen hundred thirty square feet.
And that's per single, per unit, so twenty-six hundred per duplex, correct? So if I do a little bit of quick math here, and it looks like we got seventeen point one third, seventeen and a third feet and twenty-two and a third and seventeen and a third, we add those together. Uh, and then we take this, the side of it, and my multiplication gets about twenty-five hundred square feet for the whole building. Does is, am I right on that? And if so, what about the the square footage of the garage? Then that's seems like that's being represented as living space. I could be just wrong on it, but I don't know.
Which page are you referencing?
Well, I'm looking at, uh, I don't know which page this is, where you got the, let me see if I can shrink it down. Yeah.
Right there.
Three, three fifty-two, yeah, there you go, that one. To the left and then to the back, what is, what's the multiplication of those numbers to get the square footage?
All right, go up a little bit, Dave. Go over. Maybe.
I can pull it up on mine again, I guess.
Thirty-five plus twenty-two is seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven square feet.
Seventy-seven.
I believe the applicant, um, has provided these elevations mainly for the, um, aesthetics and the look of the concept plan, which is what is required at this at this stage. This is not a P U D final plan. Any type of house would have to fit on the lots. And so, um, that's typically what happens, and so the measurements may be off by a foot or six inches on each given point, but, um, the setbacks that would be provided or be approved, if it's approved, that go with the concept plan would rule over any kind of architectural drawing such as this. It would be come down to what is the setbacks required, what are the lot standards required? And when a P U D final plan were to come through, um, the applicant would have to demonstrate that every house being proposed would meet that setback. Uh, but oftentimes, the developer will show us an aesthetic of a house, um, to show the general design elements, the conceptual architecture, the conceptual finishes, um, to denote a a level of quality, but the actual math of that unit, um, staff doesn't look at to make sure it's going to fit every time. Um, because that is something that's looked at in more detail with the P U D final plan that's approved or reviewed by the planning commission, but I certainly understand that concern.
Well, I just want to be sure my questions are clear then because it's length times width is usually square footage, I think. And then so if we're, if we have a twenty-six hundred and fifty square foot livable space, and then we take the garages out of it, that's not enough square footage. So what what you're implying is, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, is that these dimensions are not accurate.
I think the developer could speak to that a little bit more as to why they provided that, but, um, that would be my guess, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council for staff? Okay. Is the applicant present, want to come make any comments? If you haven't been sworn in, let us know, otherwise just give us your, okay, give us your name and address for the record.
Harvey Sommers, two nine seven one one East Harris Potts Road, Green Valley, Missouri.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so it is for fifty-five and over, and I think on the storage concern, where normally the furnace room and water heater would be blocked out in the garage, that that's just coming straight across there, and it's going to be, what's left over will be storage uh, for the tenants, and we've we've also added quite a few closets i- in the facility to to give you more storage. The square footage, I'm looking that up right now, uh, to see, I didn't bring that plan with me, but I do have that plan on my phone. I can give you an accurate square footage here in just a minute. Uh, is, uh, other than that, all the doorways, everything in the unit are handicap accessible. Uh, all the finishes are geared towards, uh, hand A A D A. And I can answer any other questions you might have.
Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, can we go back to the detention? Is there some reason that you put a, we've got the street, and then all of a sudden we have a house, and then we got this detention pond, which is basically?
Well, I'm assuming it's due to just the way that the existing storm is there, and so we've got a lineup to try to hit that. But I don't know, can you share anything on that, Kevin?
Give us your name and address as well for the record.
Uh, Kevin Sterrett, H G Consult, fourteen eleven Northeast Todd George, Lee Summit, Missouri. The, uh, the existing topography of the property is it's got the two pipes coming underneath Seven Highway, and they kind of come together at a pipe that's about midway on the property. And so what we're showing is basically extending the piping system to the limits of Seven Highway to recover a lot of that, uh, s- uh, surface area. And then the detention is obviously what we normally do is we go to the lowest spot on the property to drain everything too. And that's where, that's where that's going. It's actually, the detention's in a low area that's already there. So we're just going to make it, size it, you know, accordingly, which we have, and then using the rest of the area for the development kind of a thing. But, yeah, I think your concern about the setback from seven and all that is about whether there'd be balls going out on Seven Highway, just, uh, just so y'all do remind me that it is for senior-type living, so, and they're rentals, and so that's kind of what, that's what you'll expect is only most, uh, older adults don't have more than two cars, one in the garage and one in the driveway. So I don't think that with only twenty-eight units, you're going to have a lot of issues with cars parking on the street.
So you said senior living, are we talking fifty-five and older, that we're restricted to that?
Yes, and the only other thing I thought of I might add is these are two-bedroom.
Your Honor, Denise, scoot up to the mic.
These are two-bedroom units, not three-bedroom units. So so the square footage spread out overall is going to be larger than if it was a three-bedroom unit.
Your Honor, Councilmember Edmondson.
Oh, what is your depth on the garage? When you stated you had the hot water heater and the furnace is going to be in the garage?
I think it's, I believe it's nineteen foot six.
And that that's to the?
That's to, that's to the, that's to that room, yes.
Okay.
And I can double-check that. Not fast on the phone.
That's all right.
Did you have some?
I can help.
Oh. Go ahead, Councilmember Taylor, with the answer.
Um, Councilman Edmondson, that is a furnace room and a hot water room. There is a wall there, and they are usually about nineteen to twenty feet deep in that area. My daughter lives in one, similar to that, that's.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant before we go to the audience? Okay, you can keep looking for your answer if you get it in a minute.
Yeah, if you don't, yeah, give me just a second.
I'll give you another chance at the end.
Okay, thank you.
First, uh, we have support of, I do have a speaker appearance form from John Speak. John, are you here to speak in support of? John? That is John, okay. If you can give us your name and address.
My name is John Speak, forty-four oh five Southwest Eighth Street Terrace. And I did put my name as support, even though I don't support it.
Okay. Can you give me one quick minute to see if there's anybody that speaks in support of, and I'll give you another chance here in just a second?
I missed, I missed the, uh, planning commission meeting last week.
Mr. Speak, give me just one second.
I'm sorry?
Give me, give me one minute, let me see if anybody wants to speak in support of.
Well, I'm going to speak, I'm not going to speak in negative or positive.
Okay, okay, let me, let me give you three minutes, and you tell us what you're thinking.
Clock it down, because he talks a lot faster than I listen, so.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Uh, I'm concerned about the water drainage around where it goes and how much we have down there around the retention pond and whether they're going under Highway seven. Now, I'm sure that they've said that, and I don't, I don't understand it, but that's my problem. Uh, I'm wearing my hearing aids, I still don't understand it. And we do have a lot of water in that area, and it's always water in that creek. Well, it probably got water in it right now. And the city has a old water main coming from Highway seven along the south side of Southgate. And I've had at least, and I live a block west of there on a cul-de-sac, it doesn't show, but I live on a cul-de-sac, just just west of there. And I've had at least five leaks between this drawing on the southwest corner of this mound and to the west of my house because it just springs leaks. I didn't do it this winter. But at one time, the city measured it from Highway seven down to our cul-de-sac to put a plastic line in down the middle of of Southgate. I liked that idea, you know, and and get get it away, you know, they, you know, you have good drink, you have good water there for years to come if you put a PVC pipe in there in the middle of. Um, I really, my main, like I say, my main concern is the drainage, the water. Uh, I think I heard sixty-five and over. I thought it was a higher limit than that when I entered the building.
Fifty-five, actually.
Huh?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five and over, okay. With the interest rates and the things the way they are, I don't think you're going to find a lot of interest in that property. And that may be negative, and I'm talking positive, but I'm sorry, that's just the way it is, you know? I just think that it's, it's just not appealing to people. And and we've got another gentleman coming up that's going to do a lot more talking than I am, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll still stick with support of, as anyone likes to speak in support of. All right, opposition two, I've got another from Ronald Paul. Mr. Paul, are you in the, come on up. Can you give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Ronald Paul, I live at four four one two Southwest Eighth Street Terrace, which is basically where between three and four is the end of my lot. Uh, I'm here speaking in opposition for myself and hopefully for the seven other residents that live on that west side that this lot border, that this project will border because it will will take away every aspect of our property. All the trees, all the wildlife, everything that is sitting in there that protects us. And and one of the reasons why I purchased this property was because of the buffer zone already between and the fact that it had to be a specific, single-family residential to go in there, not a business residential and not multi-family. Um, when they, when they go in there, I mean, the gentleman last week said that he's not in the tree tree kitting business or tree removal business. Well, I don't know if any of you have built things before on large acres of land, but you have to remove all the trees. There's no way around it. So they will bulldoze every tree down on this piece of property because they have to put in a new stormwater sewer system on the west side of the property that will be within ten feet of my fence. And the water will drain down through that thing and will end up in the back of my yard and the yards along there. But the main concern that I have really is removing the trees and the vegetation, it's going to stress the wildlife. Um, the the animals that they're going to run off are going to end up in my yard and all of our yards in that neighborhoods there. Um, I don't think they really thought through this whole project. Like you say, and like other gentlemen here talked spoke spoke before, uh, trying to put a ten-pound bag of, or ten pounds of manure in a five-pound sack, and that's what they're trying to do here. They're going to cut out all this stuff, the the stream that's already in there, they're, they've made a way to fix that, okay? But they have never actually been there when the water actually ponds up in my backyard. And that's my, my, I mean, um, they're, the buildings, properties, the backs of their properties are in such proximity to my property and and all of our properties. Their backyards or their back doors are going to be within twenty feet. So it takes away, I, it it takes away their privacy, and it takes away my privacy by not having any buffer between either any one of us. I was hoping they would be able to put in, or like an easement to leave at least some of the trees there between my, our, our, our western line or our eastern line and their western line. or our eastern line and their western line. But looking at the maps and the schematics, they have to rip out all the stores, storm sewer system to get it to fit in there. And as you're, you were talking before is how, what is the proximity to the, to the street? I mean, the proximity, I mean, there is no room to put what they're trying to put here. Uh, I have one last concern, and it, it's the, the ownership, um, uh, the Wasser and Winter. I don't think that they are valid to do business in the state of Missouri. They are, uh, according to the state of Missouri, they are no longer valid to do business in the state of Missouri.
Appreciate your comments, thank you. Is there any other comments from the council before we close the public hearing? Okay, you got more opposition, too?
No clarification.
Well, come on up and, and give us your name and address for the record.
I appreciate that, my name is Michael Dorn, I live at seven oh one Southwest Forty Street in Blue Springs. And, uh, I'm very familiar with developments. I was in the commercial contracting business for thirty years. Just, just one thing, and this is not to slam anybody, but just so everybody understands, there's a difference between detention and retention. Okay, so when you're looking at this, this is not a pond. Detention detains water, then when it builds up, it drains out, and it's a dry area. Retention is a pond that always keeps water in it, so it's just important. So when people get it undermined, that they may be thinking that, oh, this is always gonna have water, and it's not. But if it's not designed properly, it will. And then if the vegetation that's put in there is not put in there correctly, that can cause a lot of problems too. So also depends on the elevation and the vegetation. But I just wanted to clarify that, because detention pond's not correct, retention pond is.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
I told the applicant you could come answer that question. Do you have that answer for council? Come on back up.
So that garage depth is twenty-two foot four for, for the, the depth, and then the width of that is nine foot six for that furnace room. But three foot of that, or two and a half foot of that, there's a closet that comes off the end, so that's added to the nine foot six that's in the hallway of the house. So, so there's, there's a little bit of storage there between the garage and then we've got closets throughout the house, uh, more than normal.
Council have any other questions before we close the public hearing?
Yeah, I just want, I just want to restate, or someone to restate, um, I know planning commission, I believe it was you that said the, uh, tree line on the west side would be preserved as much as possible.
As much as the city will, I mean, yeah, I, I don't, it costs a lot of money to take out trees and stuff. And yeah, I wanna leave as much as possible, but bear in mind that we do have to tie into that storm system that's existing, but it's off the property line in quite a ways. Uh, so I'm just, I'm not seeing us stripping that. And then your, um, question on the square footage, it's twelve hundred per side.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Bring her back up here to the council, any discussion or questions before we close the public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Introduction and reading of Bill five two two-three for rezoning and planned development of South Gate Villas.
I will reintroduce it.
First reading of Bill five two two-three, an ordinance approving a rezoning for seven hundred Southwest South Gate Drive from RE Residential State to PDR Planned Development Residential, and a planned development concept plan for South Gate Villas, an independent senior living development generally located west of Highway Seven, south of Southwest South Gate Drive, and east of the South Gate Hills subdivision.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. Their second?
Second.
Discussion, Councilmember Fowler.
Yes, your honor, um, I do wanna acknowledge the, the width of this lot along Seven Highway and say that it would be challenging for just about anything to go in there. And I, I, I realize the challenges this presents to developer who would like to develop this. Honestly, on, on, what's, uh, up here, if we look up there, lots nine to fourteen, to me, they're, they're just too close to Seven Highway. There is not the landscape buffer, the setbacks. Um, I, I look on Seven Highway, and I know that, uh, it, just north of Popeyes there, at, at Hearns, we've got a resident there, and it just kind of sticks out like a sore thumb. Um, and I really believe these would be two. Uh, it's just too close. If it was half of this and, uh, you know, use, use the buffering a little bit on both sides, both the east and the west, um, maybe, maybe that could go in there. But there, there's, uh, fourteen units here that just are really squeezed in there. So for me, I'm not gonna be able to support this, uh, in its current configuration. I, I just think that we normally have more setbacks than this, especially along, along Seven Highway.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of aye? Any opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Yeah, let's go and roll call it.
Councilmember Edmonton?
No.
Culpepper?
No.
Kayler?
No.
Tholen?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Mayor Levesey?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, no reason for a second reading. Next up, we have a public hearing of Scenic Valley RV Resort. Again, if you are planning to speak on this at all, please stand to be sworn in. Good, introduction.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit center into the, I'm sorry, two exhibits center into the record. City Council probation form dated June eleventh, twenty twenty-four with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication and examiner on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of sight, copy of letter sent to said property owners, copy of letter sent from applicant to property owners regarding an open house, planning commission presentation, emails from surrounding property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, twenty fourteen conference of plan by reference, letters regarding proposed project, bill approving rezoning, bill approving the conditional use permit, bill approving the general development plan, exhibit two is letters received after publication of the agenda on June fourteenth. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Staff, go ahead with your report.
Dave McCumber, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city. Before you this evening, a request for a rezoning, conditional use permit, and general development plan for Scenic Valley RV Resort located at two nine six zero seven East RD Mize Road. The project consists of a proposed recreational vehicle park consisting of one hundred and ten campsites on one lot and two tracts of land. A preliminary plat was approved for the project at the June tenth, two thousand twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. The amenities for the development include a clubhouse, playground, splash pad, and dog park. The property currently includes one parcel of approximately eighteen point four seven acres and is zone AGC County Agriculture. The first request is to rezone the subject property from AGC to light industrial. The subject property cannot be developed under the current zoning designation under the county prior to any development activity on the site where rezoning application would need to be submitted for review and approval. Approval of the rezoning application would allow for the existing eighteen point four seven acre parcel to be, to be developed in accordance with the standards of the LI zoning district. Denial of the rezoning application would result in the property remaining undeveloped for an unknown period of time. The subject property is in a developing area with access to services and facilities. Additional improvements, including utilities, stormwater, and street improvements will be provided by the developer. There is one point of access off East RD Mize Road. Full road improvements will be made on East RD Mize Road from Coronado to approximately four hundred and thirty-five feet west of the intersection. A traffic memo prepared by a professional engineer in the state of Missouri states that the anticipated traffic generated by this development does not warrant a traffic impact study. Parking requirements have been met. The land use requires that parking is one space per campsite, camping space. The development is providing one space at each campsite in addition to the RV parking camp space, parking space. The community building will have one space per four persons for a total of nineteen parking spaces. A six-foot wide sidewalk between the community building and parking spaces has been provided. There are no sidewalks offered with, throughout the RV resort. A public sidewalk will be provided along East RD Mize Road leading to the entrance of the RV Resort from northeast Coronado Drive. The community building, which is classified as an accessory structure, incorporates four-sided architecture through a mix of materials, windows, and lighting. Final building and site design will be reviewed through the Site Plan Design Review Process. The proposed development will be in compliance with the UDC if a conditional use permit is granted. The development meets the standards for a general development plan. The landscape plan includes a thirty-foot wide tree preservation area easement along the south property line and a forty-foot wide tree preservation easement area along the east property line, providing a more private and mature screening to the adjacent land uses. Additional landscaping will be required within the site and along frontages of the property and will be reviewed during the Site Plan Design Review Process. Because these requirements and, and proposed design, the development should be compatible with the area. The proposed general development plan is not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's C-two area plan as the property is designated for small-scale multifamily development. The general development plan is consistent with all requirements of the UDC. The applicant has not requested any deviations or modifications. The general development plan complies with all applicable use, development, and design standards set forth in this code. No alternative, alternative development standards have been proposed. The general development plan is sensitive to the existing land uses and is compatible with the existing adjacent land use designations. The proposed use is not what staff would consider an intensive use. Therefore, staff believes it will not negatively impact adjacent land uses. Staff has concerns with the development becoming long-term housing for, um, of a transient nature rather than a recreational campground. The proposed plan follows the requirement of this development code pertaining to the preliminary plat. The plan is proposed to be developed in one phase. Staff reviewed the rezoning, conditional use permit, and general development plan under the criteria outlined in the staff report. Based on this review criteria, staff recommends approval of the rezoning with two conditions, and approval of the conditional use permit with six conditions, and approval of the general development plan with one condition. And with that, we can take questions.
Questions from the council for staff?
Eventually, I will.
Okay.
Can I do it now?
If, if you would like, as long as I bring the applicant up.
Could, could you tell me, uh, maybe I'm ahead of myself, because you're talking about rezoning now, but the western boundary where it says, uh, three point some acres or whatever, could you tell me the width of that? The actual east-west tract, how wide is that? And how long is it? I can't do the math accurately. Well, maybe it's there, maybe it's a thousand some feet, is that, no?
It, it looks to be about a hundred and seventy-five feet from the very west northwest corner to the eastern boundary of that tract day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussions for staff, or any question for staff? Okay, is the applicant present, have some comments? Come on up. I know you were sworn in, so just give us your name and address for the record.
Chad Rysinger, one one four Southwest Eagles Parkway, Grain Valley, Missouri, six four zero two nine.
Go ahead.
So just like to introduce myself and then introduce the project a little bit, and
Go ahead.
Go move pretty quick, so, um, I was born and raised in Blue Springs and, uh, been building and developing in Grain Valley mostly, and rehab properties all over Kansas City. Um, most recently built Eagle Convenience Storage in Grain Valley. Uh, I general contracted the, the project and self-performed most of the work. Uh, I also hired a manager, and we've, uh, also operate the business together, and, uh, we've taken it from zero to a hundred percent occupancy and, uh, have, uh, a hundred percent five-star reviews. Through that process of leasing it up, we, uh, you know, I noticed that there were a lot of RVs calling, people calling to park their RVs, and we don't have RV parking, we don't advertise for it, but we were still getting all those calls and, and, uh, as well as having people move in, sell in your home, and, uh, telling me all about how really nice the RVs are that they're making, and they were ready to go hit the road. So I started looking into that and realized that some of these are, you know, two-bedroom, two-bath, five slide-outs with wraparound couches and, and fireplaces and things like that, I was amazed. And then I did, uh, I, I took a trip to Florida and met with my uncle, and, uh, we, I said, let's go take a look at an RV park down here. And when we did, I was blown away. It was like, everything was paved, the driveways were paved, the parking spots were paved, the patios were paved, everything was immaculately landscaped. And I was just blown away, and I, I, and so I came back and I started looking into it, and I, I found that, you know, just right here in this District Four that we're in, in Missouri, there was over eighty-four million dollars in economic impact, annual economic impact from just campgrounds, campgrounds alone. Eighty-four million in just this district. And however, there hasn't been any activity in the RV park development spectrum in a really long time. It's been over sixty years possibly in Jackson County, uh, or more, since we've seen a, an RV park development. And so what I'm proposing is a luxury RV park, which is a, is a, uh, is a set-alone product, it's a, it's a new product that, uh, that provides the, the concrete driveways and, and civil engineered drawings for the stormwater retention and, um, and the ADA accessible clubhouse, as well as a tornado shelter, and all of the things that we would expect from a newer development that just isn't available in anything around here. So, um, we've provided quite a bit of, uh, tree preservation area around it. I think we've got a hundred, we've got four acres on the west side, a hundred and seventy-five feet across there. On the east side, there's about a hundred and sixty feet from our property line to where the first RV space would be. Uh, and all of that is designated as property preservation as well, or tree preservation as well. That means I can't develop there, and I, I can't take out any trees or do anything with that, that is specifically in the code for, it's a, it's a, it's a vocabulary that they use in the code that I can't touch that, so that's why we called it that. And so, uh, I can't think, this is a gorgeous eighteen-acre property with a lot of character. There is, uh, a, a rock bluff on the, along the west side. Uh, there's an old homestead there, there's a spring house that was built with stacked stone, pillars, and just a lot of neat character and things to explore for the customers. I can't think of another development that could go here that wouldn't require clearcutting the property. What we're proposing is to come in and save as many trees as possible. In fact, our biz, our, our plan for this property is, uh, would not cut, would not require clearcutting the property. We would come in and preserve all those trees and just take out the minimum for the roadway and some utilities, so. You know, uh, I'll just close and say that, uh, with a development like this, what really counts, in addition to just the development part, that I believe fits really well with this property, is having somebody in charge that has passion, experience, and integrity. And if you value those things, like I do, I think we would be a good fit as well, as well as the property being a good fit. Uh, I'd just like to close really quick that back in March, I, um, when I was turning, when I was applying for this, I reached out to the mayor of Grain Valley, and I asked, and just asked, said, hey, uh, would you mind, you know, maybe giving me a recommendation? And he said, he wrote me an email back in March and said, please take this correspondence. please take this correspondence as my support for Chad Rysinger and developments he brings to the city. Mr. Rysinger has been a great business addition to Grain Valley with Eagle Storage. His storage facility is one of the nicest, if not the nicest facility in town. I even use it for my Grain Valley Fair nonprofit store and fair items, store fair items when I'm not in use. He is also willing to support any nonprofit group that reaches out for support. It is great to have businesses that give back to the community in the way he does. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Mayor Mike Todd, Grain Valley.
All right, any questions for the applicant from the council, Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. Appreciate all you do for the community and it sounds like you got a rich history of doing that. The, this particular parcel, you know that, you may or may not know that we've gotten a lot of feedback from the residents. You know, they, they bought their properties expecting that to be residential as, as staff mentioned that there was, that was kind of the plan. And this is a different proposal, we're hearing it, but there is a lot of concern by the neighbors about that. Any consideration or any thoughts about building residential there?
I don't, I, so part, so some of the feedback from the residents, we had a meeting at the golf club and met with the residents there and while they weren't particularly on board with this project, they were definitely against a multifamily. I think they were more against that than, some of the folks that are, you know, there's, there's those that are completely against it and always gonna be. But some of the folks that were asking a lot of questions and were there to, that actually showed up to the meeting, were there to meet me and get the information, did not want to see multifamily there as well, I mean, I would say more than what we're doing here.
You have a question for the applicant from the council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll go to the public, do I have anybody in the audience want to speak in support of, support of? Okay, I've got several speaker appearance forums, as per usual, let's try not to repeat ourselves. If you have something that's been addressed, try to just give us new information. Once we know there's a concern, we can move on with that concern. So we're gonna start, I have Alice or Kathy Robinson. Come on up, give us, if you haven't been sworn in, let us know, otherwise give us your name and address for the record.
I was sworn in, Alice Robinson, twenty-five oh one northeast Wheatley Drive, Blue Springs, Missouri, and I live in Adams Point Village, the property that-
Can you pull the mic a little closer so we can hear you a little better?
I will, try.
Thank you, all right, you've got three minutes, tell us what you're thinking.
Okay, so several concerns. First is property value. When we have an RV park, whether it's luxury right now or what it may be five years down the road or ten, if the builder moves on, sells the property, questions were raised at the last meeting, how much the city can enforce as far as, because it's, this is a whole new concept. And how much can the builder enforce as far as trying to maintain it as luxury? There's a lot of concern with traffic on our demise and the entry point where the camper's supposed to come and go, plus the effect that it's gonna have off Adams Ferry Parkway, down our demise or Coronado and then to try and enter the park. It seems impossible, but I'm not an engineer. But there's a lot of concern, there's already a fair amount of traffic on Coronado that doesn't make the curve there where they're talking about entry. And I don't know when the last traffic study was done, but I don't know if they've considered the fifty-five and older housing that's still going up with multiple units. I don't know how many that's gonna have, but that will add to the traffic as well as the RV park. The hours that they keep, the smoke, the noise. Is it gonna be long term housing like the RV park that's just maybe a mile down the road? That's an, and it's an eyesore, they do try to keep it up, but we don't really want it in our neighborhood. We're really concerned about property value, safety, all of that.
Thank you for your thoughts. Next up we have David Williams. Can you come up and give us your name and address for the record?
Good evening, David Williams, twenty-five twelve northeast Crestview Street. So I did send a letter out, probably, it sounds like you've received multiple correspondences, but I sent a letter or email out to, to all of you and Congressman Erickson, or Councilman Erickson said you had filed it with the clerk, I'm not exactly sure what that means, but it's a pretty detailed four, four page letter. There are kind of two main points, I'll summarize here. I think the public needs additional time to evaluate the pros and cons of the development. It was apparent from the presentations last week that the developer and relevant city staff had been working on the proposal for, for some months, I'm not sure exactly how long. Very, very little information was provided to the community during that time. And such information was provided a week or so before the zoning and planning commission public hearing on June tenth. And by the way, this, this is the personal views of, of me and my wife Kim, who's, who's back in, in the back here. In my, in our view of the hearing last week, on one side featured among other things, facts, figures, detailed plans, detailed comments from the city on the plan, detailed research by the developer and how to counter community concerns. On the other side, a week understanding by the community of what exactly was being proposed. I personally spoke against the proposal on June tenth, but it was, but it was inarticulate and a bit fumbling as I had no time to prepare, research and really deliver an objective opinion on the proposed development. And as I pointed out in the letter I sent to you last week, developer had held an informal get together that you mentioned earlier in early June, a week or less before the public hearing last week to discuss the project, which sounds helpful and thoughtful, but whether he intended it or not, it was a brilliant strategic move to gather information from those opposed to the project, extract their concerns and then have time to provide counter arguments during last week's session on June tenth. Point number two, Kim and I don't have a definitive stance on the proposal at this time, really, but would simply like the opportunity to consider the matter further. We were able to find one study online that's described in the letter, provides a starting point in evaluating the pros and cons of RV parks located near or adjacent to residential neighborhoods. Got twenty-seven seconds. So request number three things, allow for additional thirty to sixty days of public review and comment with a possible additional public hearing after that. Transparency, we've, we're not sure what a small scale multifamily development type is, is that, how's that different from a regular multifamily, small scale, I'm not sure what that means. An RV, so.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, that's your time. To, to your point on the emails, any emails that we received, either support or opposition are part of the record. So the city clerk has that on file, it's part of the record for this project. So just to answer that question, it's on file, your objections from your letter are all in the official record for this project.
Okay, thank you.
So everything you wrote is already considered as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Dave Schwartz. You come up and give us your thoughts. Give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dave Schwartz, twenty-five twelve northeast of Mandalane, Adams Point Village. First off, I want to state, I never got a letter to attend a meeting and I live on the first street, but I'm more than probably four, five hundred yards away, but I never got communication to attend a meeting. My neighbors actually shared some stuff, which was the only reason I found out about the planning commission meeting. But first and foremost, I'd like to just say that my wife and I moved this neighborhood about seven years ago. It's my wife's dream home and I can be honest with you, I would never have moved to this neighborhood if I knew an RV park, recreational trailer park would be going in next door. And what I would ask any of you is, if it was your family, your subdivision, would you want an RV park next to it? The second thing I'd like to say is that I'm an avid golfer, Adams Point is looked at in the eastern Jackson County as a, an upscale. I mean, a lot of people from the city travel over here and he made a comment that that's common to have an RV park next to golf courses. I can tell you, I have a friend that runs multiple courses in multiple states. I asked him that question last week after the meeting. His reply, never, never, never for a nice golf course. Also his lines, he's gonna be like thirty yards away from hole seven. It's gonna look really good in the middle of winter when there's no trees on the, or no leaves on the trees, excuse me. The other thing I have concern with, when you have transient people like this, it increases the likelihood of vandalism because they have less care for their community. It's not their community, they're in and out of here. And he talks about not permanent residency, but you can have twelve extended stays. So it is a permanent residency when you can live there for a year. So I'll leave it at that, I know there's other people, just my vote is, I don't want an RV park next to us, I'm sure it won't help my home sale value in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Sean Wigers, Wigers. If you could come up and give us your name and address for the record.
Sean Wigers, twenty-five oh one northeast of Mandalane. I strongly object to the RV being put in as well. And Mr. Rysinger, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly, we are not Florida. People take an RV to go to Florida to live in full time or through the winter months. And to give you just a little bit of my background, I've been a general manager and a finance director for an RV dealership in this town for twenty-three years. I also own State Park Marina at Lake Palma de Terra. I know everything there is about RVs. I know what RV parks consist of, if it gets sold off. You know, his comments are campers and motor coaches must be tip topping quality and appearance. Well, what's his appearance versus your appearance versus us who live in that community? My wife and I, that's also our dream home, it's our forever home. And I can promise you, I never would have moved there had I known someone was gonna put an RV park there. It doesn't contribute to the city in a positive manner because those people do not reside there. Is there a place for them? Yes, not next to Adams Point Village. He also states in here that not create a sense of permanent residency and like the gentleman that mentioned before with the extensions and extensions and extensions. Well, if these people can come in there during the winter months and they can put in hay bales and they can put in skirts around them, it looks trashy. That's not what Blue Springs is about. Blue Springs is about trying to create a better community, a better environment for all of us who live in this community. I support the fact that his idea, his idea is just in the wrong spot. So I know there's other people wanting to speak, but I just want to make it perfectly clear, I don't think a traffic study's been done recently. With Amazon, you might as well just put another Amazon there, as many vans as there is there. They run, they run a hundred miles an hour, the police can't control it. It, it's a rough road, it can't handle that much more traffic. And I'm just here to tell you, once you let an RV park in, I don't care who maintains it, who he thinks got integrity, those people will get older trailers and older trailers and older trailers. Crime comes with that, theft comes with that, I've seen it. I see it at the marina and I see it being a general manager for twenty-three years and I hope that means something to you up there on the board. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next I have Mr. Brian Pratt, you come up and give us your comments. If you haven't been sworn in, let us know, otherwise just give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Brian Pratt, twenty-five oh eight northeast of Mandalane, and I was sworn in earlier. Good evening, so Father's Day yesterday, I spent a lot of time reflecting on a lot of the decisions I've made for my family. Mostly good. Always use two guideposts, what's gonna be best for their future and what's gonna keep them safe? And I thought about what to say today, really those same guideposts apply to you all. What's gonna be best for the future of Blue Springs and what's gonna keep its citizens safe? That's what I think about, so I think about the positive side of an RV campground. Potential revenue, that's what the developer said. I don't know about that. Walmart recently made a decision to say that they're not gonna allow RVs on their parking lots, even though they could have had a hundred percent of the revenues essentially. They've made a change, they decided that maybe it wasn't worth it. So the idea that you're gonna make, the city's gonna make a lot of money on this, I have some questions about that. Now I'm gonna look at the flip side of the coin. It's a beautiful area, the city's made a lot of investment in that area of Blue Springs, the golf course and the surrounding areas. If we put an RV campground next to one of our beautiful crown jewels, the golf course, it's gonna decrease the property value there. Do you imagine watching the Masters and seeing on the backside of hole seven an RV park? I don't, I can't imagine that. So I think about that and I think about the decreased property values for the city and the golf course and that same rationale applies to the neighbors. I think about the transient nature of the residents, weekly stays, monthly stays and yearly stays. And I'm frankly concerned you're gonna have the same issues we have with that old interstate and property, the same issue you're gonna bring to the other side of town. I'm worried about the increase of crime, that's gonna affect the city first and our neighborhood first because we're closest. The traffic has already been discussed. Finally, I want to talk about something, you know, I live just downwind from this park. And could you imagine having a hundred and twenty campfires and living downwind from that, just east of that at a certain time and how horrible and noxious that would be for me and my neighbors? And just by example, I live halfway up that first street, I never heard anything from the developer. We never got any information from the developer and that's probably because I live five feet away or ten feet away from whatever that line was. But that doesn't stop a developer from saying, hey, why don't I just tell the whole neighborhood what I'm doing here? So I have some concern that the developer may have met the minimum requirements, but I would see that same pattern going through if this thing comes into play. So going back to those guideposts with my last fifteen seconds, making the city, what's the best for the future of the city and what's gonna keep its residents safe? I ask this council respectfully and implore you to reject the zoning change to allow an RV campground right there at that spot in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Next I have Brett Taylor. Got about three or four more here. Brett, do you have comments that you'd like to add to what we're talking about here? Okay. Sitting on about two hours with everybody's been hanging out here, so. Judy Porter, do you have something to add to the comments here? Go ahead Judy, come on up, give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Judy Porter, five oh three northeast Greenview Drive. Just a couple of things I support, one I'd like to say also. But as reference, there is already an RV park one mile to the east of this proposed development. I'm concerned about noise. Right now I can sit out on my deck and hear the ping of a bat and the crowd cheering at Legion Field. And I don't think I'm gonna be able to hear that otherwise. And like one person said, you know, we built these houses, we moved in with this plan to be our forever home and had that been told to us that there was going to be an RV park there, we wouldn't be there. Okay? And I don't think any of you would be there if that was your home and you were told that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrell, Ken Harrell, do you have additional comments to add? Come on up and give us your name and address for the record. You're a stranger to this, this room here, so.
I don't have my granddaughter with me tonight. Ken Harrell, twenty-seven oh eight northeast Guyer Falcon Drive in Blue Springs. I just wanted to come at it just a little bit different. While I'm speaking in opposition to the RV park, I don't believe that an RV park, particularly a luxury RV park is laid out, is necessarily a bad thing for the city. I was thinking about, you know, some of our goals for making Blue Springs more of a destination point, downtown redevelopment, the golf course, the new aquatic center, the upcoming world cup, the kind of things where we want to help make Blue Springs more of a destination and I think an RV park, a very nice RV park would certainly lend itself to that, to that strategy of having people stop here as their destination as opposed to going forward. So I don't think it's the RV park per se that I would be opposed to, but it is the location and the points have all been made. The golf course, I think the other point about the golf course is that not only does that impact the residents that adjoin it, it also impacts the city as it's a city owned golf course and to have- And to have that RV park next to a city property, I think also would be another, another attraction in addition to its impact on the neighbors. All the other things I was going to say have already been made, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Last speaker appearance forum has for Deborah Steiner. No, that's just for later. Okay. That's the last one I have as opposition to. Does anybody else in the audience wants to speak in opposition to this project? Okay, bring it back up to the council for any other comments before we close the public hearing. Councilmember Ebenson.
You know, it's good to hear all these comments and a lot of discussion. I did, I want to say I did attend the developers' meeting he had at the golf course and heard that. Back a few years, Councilman Kayler and I actually toured a, what I would call a similar project like you have down in St. Peters, Missouri. It was doing really well, nice place. It was a city-sponsored, and it was next to a city lake. It was a great idea, and I agree with the fact that Mr. Harrell made, as far as I think there's a need for that, and possibly a location would be more appropriate for that. But I do see that you've got a great idea, hopefully, if you can find someplace to do it. But I don't think this location is the best one for that type of a project, and so I can't, I can't be in favor of it.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. I want to reiterate some of the things, points the citizens made as well, and that impacting the property value, safety vandalism, concerns there. They did, excellent points that, this is probably neat in the, somewhere in the vicinity, but this location is definitely a concern. I come at it from a, looking at tax revenue on per square foot of property. I looked up the trailside RV place about a mile down the road. It paid eleven thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars in taxes for twenty-twenty-three across two hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet. That's about five cents per square foot of lot. Our residents who live over there, they're paying seventy-two cents per square foot of their lot. Amazon, they paid three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in property taxes last year, and an average of fifty-four cents per square foot. We didn't, I just don't think that the city invested into the golf course, all the land and property that we put out there. We were after attractions like Kohl's, PepsiCo, Durvett, Amazon, Versia. And I just can't see that we did all that to bring in a use that brings in this little of tax revenue. I think that the citizens over there built, expecting residences over there, and so I'm not going to be able to support this either.
Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Culpepper.
I concur with the investment of the city. I think it's a nice plan. I see problems, though, enforcing some of the things that you want to keep. You know, you talk about nice RVs. I don't know how you can enforce that down the road. I think it's a good plan. I just find the location is very difficult.
Councilmember Erickson.
I just want to not repeat, but I want to repeat, I do agree with that. And my, I appreciate the residents concerned. To me, it's the sixty-one thousand residents and the golf course that I'm more concerned about. No offense to you guys, if I were living there, I'd be hyper-concerned. I can't support it either.
Okay. Any comments before we close the public hearing? Close the public hearing. Next up is introduction reading of Bill five-two-two-four, the rezoning for Scenic Valley RV Resort.
I will introduce it.
First reading of Bill five-two-two-four, an ordinance approving a rezoning for a property located at two-nine-six-oh-seven East Artemiz Road, which contains eighteen point four-seven plus or minus acres from A G C Agricultural County to L I Light Industrial for Scenic Valley RV Resort. A recreational vehicle park generally located south of the Amazon Distribution Center, north and east of the Adams Point Golf Club, and west of the Adams Point Village subdivision.
Your Honor, remove the bill, be approved on its first reading, and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Several during the public hearing. Any other comments? All right, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? No.
No.
I'm going to call that motion fails unless somebody wants to call for a roll call. Assuming that means item fifteen and sixteen, we do not need to continue with. Is that right, staff? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Any, is that, is that okay from city attorney? The next up is item seventeen. It's the introduction reading of Bill five-two-two-seven, declaring surplus quitclaim deed for CJC Fire Protection District.
First reading of Bill five-two-two-seven, an ordinance declaring certain city-owned real property as surplus and authorizing the city administrator to sign a deed conveying land to Central Jackson County Fire Protection District for fire station number five.
Your Honor, remove the bill, be approved on its first reading, and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Second reading of Bill five-two-two-seven, an ordinance declaring certain city-owned real property as surplus and authorizing the city administrator to sign a deed conveying land to Central Jackson County Fire Protection District for fire station number five.
Your Honor, remove to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Tholen.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ebenson.
Aye.
Mayor Lovise.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously and given ordinance number five-three-three-seven.
Now, we're visitor section, and Ms. Steiner, you can come up now and give your comments. Go ahead and give us your name and address. Guess it's not a public hearing, but still for the record.
My name is Deborah Steiner, four-ten Southwest Ten Street, Blue Springs.
Okay, you've got three minutes. Tell us what you're thinking.
Okay, my name is Deborah Steiner, and I reside at four-ten Southwest Ten Street in Blue Springs. I'm a U.S. citizen, a senior, and a Jackson County resident. On May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, a storm came through Blue Springs with seventy to eighty mile per winds. A tree was pulled from its roots at the end of the two properties. The house next door to us, which is four oh eight, and our house, four-ten Southwest Ten Street. The tree also landed on the fence. The property, four oh eight, is a rental property with a stolen vehicle on it with no plates. I asked, I was informed that my city inspector was J. Ingricia, I-N-G-R-A-S-S-I-A, for information on the owner. She told me to look it up online. The property is not registered with the city of Blue Springs. I received a notice from the city of Blue Springs from the city inspector, J. Ingricia, on June third, nine days after the storm, for court hearing on June nineteenth at nine a.m., which is a federal holiday. But as I see when you are coming into the court, into the building today, you have signs up that it's a holiday. Well, this was a phone hearing, so there would be no way that I would be aware that it would be a federal holiday and it would be closed. The notice was about the fence, the tree, and the limb debris. I called the city inspector on June seventh and told her about the holiday, and she replied, she can do what she wants to do. I also said the tree, fence, and debris is not on my property. She said that she drove by, so I asked her to come on the property, and she said no, that she does not have to come on the property. I went to the Jackson County GIS website, and the fence is on four oh eight. They have an additional two feet past the fence, which is their property. The tree was uprooted with a nine-foot hole. The lot of four oh eight angles, and at the end of the property line is four feet, which was where the tree is. I came to the city last Monday to get the city GIS, and the clerk said the person who does this is gone today. I asked when he was shooting it back, and they said indefinitely. I asked if someone was in charge, and they said no. Another clerk told me, did you go on the computer? The city should check the dates before they schedule a court date. They should also check their GIS map before they send out any notices. Also, a drive-by doesn't go by life, and a fence does not necessarily measure the boundary lines of a property. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Steiner.
Your Honor, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Could you tell me your address again? Was it four oh eight Southwest Ten Street?
Mine is four-ten.
Four-ten, and the other property is four oh eight, and you don't know who the owner is?
Well, after I did research, I found out who the owner is.
You got it. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
All right. I don't have any other speaker appearance forums, so I'm going to assume that's all for the visitor section. We've had a long meeting. Lots of opportunity here for council members. Do you have some comments? Does anybody have any additional comments? Councilmember Kayler? Oh, no. Councilmember Erickson.
Oh, well, maybe Jared's going to want me to yield to you, but I would like to casually welcome Ms. Katie as our newest council member. You've endured a profound night, and thank you, thank you for being there. Your Honor, you did well.
Thank you.
And we really put you through it for this first meeting, didn't we? Councilmember Kayler.
Fortieth anniversary BMX, Sunday.
Councilmember Kayler reminded me of that, too, that apparently BMX has been in that location for forty years as well, yeah? You had a personal connection to it, I understand.
Yeah, I did. I did security the first night.
Any other comments from Councilmember Culpepper?
Yes, well, obviously, it's Girls on Fire Week. And this is our first session. We've got a great group of girls, and we'll take all well wishes. We have one day down. We have four to go until our next session in July. So, it's going real well so far.
So far. All right. Well, I would also like to welcome Councilmember Tholen. Yes, we put you through the ringer for this first meeting, so they don't usually last two hours and twenty minutes, but obviously, that's always possible, especially when we have a lot of development, so. Yeah, with the AC off, we're just making sure you're feeling the heat, literally.
Yep.
But I do want to say, I think Katie will make a great addition to the council. We talked a little about, the council knows her background, but I'll let you make some comments. I'm going to give your whole, your whole bio here, but she's a VP at Equity Bank, has worked there for a long time as well, lived in the district two for, what'd you say, seventeen years? In district two for this council district, so I think will make a great representative. Her family's in the audience. I'll let you introduce them as well, but a couple of kids at Blue Springs, well, I guess, not right at Blue Springs High School yet. One at Blue Springs High School.
Oh, yeah, one in Blue Springs.
That's right, and one incoming in as well, so, almost. Okay, she's got another year. A lot of background involvement in the community and as a mom to the activities of the boys, so if you want to say a few comments just for the public here, introduce yourself, and we'll be glad to do it.
Yes, and Katie, thank you for all the support. It was a ringer the last couple of weeks, but it was well worth it. Yeah, my husband Clint, my son Tice, and then my other son Zane, one's at Paul Kinder, and then one is at Blue Springs High School. So, I've been involved in Blue Springs baseball, chamber events. My husband was the baseball, or football president for most, many years. Yeah, many nonprofits that I've worked on boards, and I'm just excited.
Tice, I tried to get to high school a year early, so I'm sorry, man. I was working on it. All right, with that, we also are, the city offices will be closed on Wednesday for the Juneteenth holiday, so there will be no, that is a holiday we'll be closed for. Any other comments? I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Second. All in favor, oh, there's a roll call. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go on. We are adjourned.